Apache Junction City Council to order. The pledge will be led by Councilmember Struble after Vice Mayor Wilson does the prayer.
Your Honor, that's not on part of the agenda tonight.
No.
So we can't even do that?
No.
No.
Not for a special meeting, we usually don't.
Okay.
Why is this not just a regular meeting?
It's a special meeting.
Can we do it in front of the work session?
The regular meetings by code are the first and third Tuesday's of the month. And this is the Monday, so this qualifies as a special meeting. My recollection is because of the council going to the lead conference tomorrow, the meeting was moved to tonight instead.
It was, but we always have the pledge and the prayer.
At a regular meeting. Under the, under the city code, that's part of what's called the Order of Business. It's up to the city attorney.
Typically, everything that you do is on the agenda, but, and I think I agree with the city clerk, it's a work session, we don't have a pledge of allegiance. I mean...
We're not having a work session yet?
No, this is a special meeting and...
What if I suspend this meeting, then we do the pledge, then we come back and re-adjourn it?
Well, if you want to do that, you can, you can do that.
All right. Well, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting and, for a bit, and we're gonna have a pledge and a prayer.
Okay, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we are again gathered this evening to perform city business. Please be with us and our staff as we continue to keep this community a great place to live, work, have a business, and raise a family. We wanted to say thank you for the rain that occurred the night of our last meeting. This rain was gratefully received, and again, we ask for additional rain to help relieve the dry conditions we are still experiencing. We continue to ask for your protective hand for our first responders as they continue to protect our community and our possessions. We also ask that this be extended to our community military members wherever they are serving throughout the world and their families. Keep them all safe and bring them home each and every day, in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'll call a special meeting of Apache Junction City Council to order. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
Six members present, you have a quorum, Your Honor.
There is no consent agenda, so we're gonna get right into consideration of approval for agreement between the city of Apache Junction...
Do you like the motion for the consent agenda?
Oh, yes.
There isn't one? I have an item one.
Yeah, we, uh...
Is it?
Okay, we do have it.
Confused.
We're, uh, folks for these, those, we're transitioning into iPads.
Yeah, and we're confused.
Bound books. So, there is a consent agenda.
We're lost.
Okay.
So...
I'll go for it.
Yes.
Okay. I move that the agreement between the city of Apache Junction and software as a service, SaaS or SaaS, and implementation service agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated through the Mojave, Arizona Cooperative Purchasing Contract, number 17D-TYL-0525, for the planning, configuration, implementation, maintenance, and support of the Munis Enterprise Resource Planning ERP system, is that ERP system, to enable the integrated management of city financials in the amount of $326,337 for all, for an initial five-year term with additional one-year renewals available after the initial term has expired, and additional $23,290 in estimated travel expenses for Tyler Technologies Incorporated staff on-site implementation and training sessions is in and above the contract total, with the contract one-time implementation cost for the solution being $117,632, and the annual SaaS subscription fee being $41,741 per year be approved. Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
So, the next two items are...
I believe it's the next three, actually.
There's the next three items. So do we have to mention them, or do we just go right to motions?
Let me explain, Your Honor. You do have, the next three items are scheduled public hearings for three liquor licenses. The, um, there is a required posting timeframe of 20 days prior to your hearing. We missed that deadline by about five days. The postings were done, just not, they just didn't qualify for the 20-day window. One of the applicants contacted me this morning. That's Ms. Lukowitz on behalf of Trails 88, which is DBA, the Shell company, or Shell Station. She suggested a continuance of her item, um, to the September 4th council meeting, which is your next immediate council meeting. And then I also contacted the applicant, applicant's representative for Circle K. And he also is in support of the continuance. And what he told me is that they already have a Series 10 liquor license at both locations. So they're selling liquor at this point in time. What they're going for is, is an additional tier, which is a Series 9, and that's a liquor store liquor license in addition to the beer and wine one. So I have an email from him where he, he corresponded to the state and said, "I agree to the continuance."
So we'll continue all three to the September 4th meeting?
Continue all three to September 4th, yes.
I see.
Yep. And then there's no doubt that the posting timeframe has been met.
So with, without throwing anybody under the bus, was this the city's fault, or was it the applicant's fault?
It, it's, it's the city's fault. My department is still va, short one position, still have one vacancy. And the people that are filling in, um, in one instance, one person has only been here since the first week of July, and they're doing the best they can in order to meet the deadlines. This is new. All of this is new to them.
So we have not cost these businesses money?
The Circle K, no. They already, like I said, they already have a liquor license. You had approved that previously. That's for their beer and wine sales. This was an additional tier that they had asked for. And, um, that level of liquor license was available. They're not always readily available. For the Shell Station, if you've been past there, they're still doing cleanup and renovations. So it doesn't appear to me that they were ready to open.
So if this were a small mom and pop, it would have been a big deal, but so far, yeah.
It could have been, it could have been, yeah.
Okay. So, can I call for motions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
An item two, I move that the public hearing and recommendation for this liquor license application be continued to the city council meeting on September 4th, 2018.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, and this is for the first one. Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
We have another motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
For item three, I move that the public hearing and recommendation for this liquor license application be continued to the city council meeting on September 4th, 2018.
Second.
Roll, roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
The third motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the public hearing and recommendation for this liquor license application be continued to the city council meeting on September 4th, 2018.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Oops. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Now, onto the next one, off of my paper sheet. Presentation, Discussion, and Consideration Resolution Number 18-24, authorizing the city to submit a fiscal year housing fund application. Heather Patel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Are we doing all three resolutions together at once? Yes?
Yes.
You can do the explanation, but there has to be three separate motions, three separate votes.
Great. Okay, so this, all three resolutions are pertaining to our next application for the state housing fund program, which provides funding to us for our owner occupied housing rehabilitation program. So the first resolution, Resolution 1824, is just authorizing us to submit it. Resolution 1825 is to re-adopt our existing housing rehabilitation program guidelines, which essentially lay out how the program is managed, what we do, and, and the rules, and how the program is run. We had last adopted it in 2015. There were two minor changes. One is we added an ADA clause that pertains to providing services to people who need it, and that we do not discriminate based upon any, any factors. The other item that was changed was, we changed language under the bid awards section where it talks about recommending contractors. We do not recommend contractors. We do pay for the lowest, most responsive bidder. So we just changed recommended to pay for. And then Resolution 18-26 is to commit local funds as leverage to our project. Basically, the state housing fund program is competitive statewide. There are points allocated if you provide leverage. And the lowest amount that we could provide would be 10%, and this amount is 10% of the total grant request. We are proposing to request $385,000 to do this project. There are some administrative funds in there, but we anticipate providing services to at least eight low to moderate income households. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions?
Excellent.
Don't see any? Are we ready to go into motions on that?
Sure. Your Honor. I move that Resolution Number 18-24, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, authorizing the submission of applications for FY 2018 state housing funds, which may include federal funding through the Home Investment Partnership Program or state housing funds, certifying that said applications meet the, the community's housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state housing programs and authority action. Next one. Necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in said applications be approved.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
So that was...
Next one?
Yes.
Okay, I move that Resolution Number 18-25, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, authorizing the adoption of owner occupied housing rehabilitation guidelines dated February 1, 1994, as amended in relation to a housing rehabilitation activity be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
And the last one.
Your Honor. I move that Resolution Number 1826, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, committing local funds as leverage for an FY 2018 state housing fund application be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And we're gonna adjourn that special meeting. And I'm gonna call to order the Apache Junction work session. And we need another roll call?
Yep.
All right, wait a second.
Mayor Sertie?
Yeah, here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yeah, okay, I'm here.
Councilmember Barker?
She left.
Okay. Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi is absent. Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
Six members present, you have a quorum, Your Honor.
Presentation and discussion of cases GPA dash one dash 18 and PZ dash two dash 18 for Amerco.
Rudy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rudy Eskevius, I'm the senior planner. Mr. Mayor, we have not had a general plan amendment case in a long time. I think the last one was when we adopted our 2010 general plan. Uh, I don't, in the last eight years, I don't think we've had a single amendment. But tonight, we have two to present to you. Case GPA dash one dash 18 and the companion rezoning, case PZ two dash 18. This is an application by Amerco Real Estate Company, which is the real estate division of U-Haul. Uh, they are proposing a general plan amendment and a rezoning. Uh, the subject property, let me jump ahead just a little bit. Well, the subject property is located at the southeast corner of US 60 in Idaho. It's an 80-acre property. You may recall, it was rezoned back in the early 2000s for an 80-acre power center, retail, commercial pads, shops, big box stores. Unfortunately, around 2008, the economy took a dive. That development never happened. Uh, it was rezoned back in 2007 from CI 1 PD, which was our light industry warehouse zone, to C3 PD, general commercial by plan development for the shopping center. And, uh, U-Haul bought the property from the previous owners around late 2011, and staff has been in conversations with U-Haul ever since about repurposing the property for something else. U-Haul was not interested in doing an 80-acre retail development. And, uh, so here we are tonight, Mr. Mayor. GPA 118 is a proposed land use map amendment to the city's general plan to reset, to redesignate approximately 50 acres of that 70-acre site, 78-acre site from community commercial to light industrial business park. And case PZ two 18 is the companion rezoning for that 50-acre part of the property, proposing to rezone from B1 PD, general commercial by plan development, to B5 PD, light industrial business park by plan development. The remaining 28 acres of the property south of the U-Haul lot will still be zoned B1 PD. At this time, U-Haul is the main applicant. They propose to construct a moving and storage facility at the northwest corner of the property on approximately 10 acres. Uh, the east half of the property, uh, which is the 40-acre portion, would be reserved conceptually planned for light industrial businesses. And then the remaining acre, 28 acres south of the U-Haul site would remain designated a community commercial opportunity area and would remain zoned B1 PD. Once again, this map is not very good to see, but here, we see the property, uh, once again, the 80 acres, the, you, old, um, US, US 60 is on the north. Idaho is on the west. Baseline is on the south. And Winchester Road, uh, is on the east. And you will recall, right across the street from Winchester Road is Baseline Industrial Park. Uh, the city public works facility is, is just to the south of this property. Uh, so the portion in this drawing that you see as red is the part of the property that's going to remain a community commercial opportunity area. Right now, the whole thing is red. And, and the gray parts, in other words, to, to the, on, on top of the red part and to the, and to the right of the red part, that is the part of the property that is being re-designated from community commercial to light industrial. And that's also the part of the property that is being rezoned from, uh, uh, general commercial plan development to industrial park by plan development. This is a conceptual development plan that the applicants have shared with us. Right in this corner of the property, at the very southeast corner of US 60 in Idaho, is U-Haul's proposed development. They're going to do a rental and, and retail center, equipment rentals, that kind of thing. Uh, they're, of course, they're also gonna have the trucks, the vehicles, the other things that U-Haul rents. And, uh, the, this easterly portion of the property is about 200 spaces reserved for RV and boat and vehicle storage. So combination retail and, and U-Haul, uh, equipment rentals, and then, uh, RV and boat storage for, for anybody who wants to... Pardon?
Is that covered storage, or open?
Their drawing shows covered storage, yes.
Rudy, do you mind taking questions as you go, or do you want them?
Sure.
So this is all U-Haul, they're not gonna, U-Haul, they're not gonna subcontract anything up there?
On their site, I don't believe so. On their 10-acre site. Now, just south of, of U-Haul's 10 acres is the portion of the property that would be, remain zoned B1 PD. Uh, now, the original development plan, and I think you do have a copy of it in your packets, the original development plan for the shopping center was the whole 80 acres. So this 28-acre property here is basically a scaled-down version of, of the original development plan. Uh, and then the east 40 acres of the property, and, as well as the U-Haul site, is proposed to be re-designated and rezoned the, the light industrial plan development. And this part of the property here, and, and please keep in mind that the key word here is conceptual. Uh, we may or may not see this many lots, we may or may not see this many buildings, we may or may not see, uh, a subdivision, although I think eventually there will be a subdivision. This is conceptual, i- it's flexible, it's, uh, you know, an end user, honestly, is the person who's gonna come in and develop the property. Probably not U-Haul. U-Haul is probably not gonna do this portion. U-Haul is probably not gonna do the retail portion. They will partner with, with other developers, with other, possibly other interested buyers. Uh, and, and, and that's when these properties would get developed. U-Haul's main interest is on the 10 acres.
This could be on par with the Houston Industrial Park, or lighter than that?
Along the same lines. Uh, now, Baseline Industrial Park, uh, the only reason we see lighter intensity uses in there is because their owners' association has been very careful about letting in, uh, more desirable uses. Uh, Mr. Holland over there is the president of the, of the owners' association, and they've always tried to be careful that anybody who's coming in is gonna be a compatible neighbor, that they meet the requirements, that they keep the development looking nice. And that's probably why we tend not to see, uh, some very obnoxious uses. For example, some of the stuff we might see on 17th and 18th Avenue, and West Fourth Avenue, and things like that.
And, and the sewer and water, is it already down there, would it have to be right?
There are facilities nearby. We, we met, uh, with the applicants, as well as some folks from the utility companies. SRP has a couple of substations nearby that are ready to serve the site. Uh, AJ Water District was also at the meeting. Darren from the Sewer District was also at the meeting. Uh, and facilities are nearby, there might be some, some extensions needed. There might be a couple of instances where they may, they need to put in lift stations to pump uphill. But the facilities are in the neighborhood, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Which is a big difference than Houston Industrial Park.
Absolutely.
Right.
Rudy, do we have a timeframe on this at all?
N- no, no. Uh, I imagine U-Haul will wanna get started on their site right away. Uh, but the rest of it is gonna be marketed. I believe they are, are working with CB, Richard Ellis, to try and market and promote some, you know, some of the...
I think U-Haul will get busy right away, so that we don't have a, another, um, you know, development that has been purchased, and there it sits for the next 10 years.
Right. Yeah, we don't know of another interested commercial developer or industrial developer at this time. But the, the, the purpose of the general plan amendment and the rezoning is to create the opportunity. Uh, Alon may get up here in a few minutes and, and say a couple of things. But basically, the, the city suffers from lack of, uh, good industrial sites, sizable properties. Baseline Industrial has maybe three acres left that can be put together. Uh, so if we get some of these, uh, notes of interest from GPEC and things like that, uh, we have very little to offer them. Hopefully, this will create some opportunities to be able to tap on some of those opportunities that, that, that come to us. Uh, but people looking for, for larger buildings, more acreage, things like that, hopefully, this will create for those types of opportunities.
Rudy, I know we had a, a meeting about a year ago with some U-Haul execs, and they were saying that they were doing things all over the country. Do you know, are they doing any others here in the valley, or is this their only project in the valley?
They, they did show us some brochures of things they had done in other cities, other states. Uh, I don't recall that they have anything going on here in the valley. Uh, Alon, maybe you know?
The same type of question, Mayor, council, the same type of question came up in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I had a very brief conversation with the applicant this afternoon, and they mentioned three sites that they would pull together some information to be able to be presented during the, uh, public hearing. Um, we don't have specifically, but, but my understanding is that they're under development of three different sites in the valley that would be somewhat similar in nature, not specifically of this size or orientation. Um, but yes, they do have developments in, in the valley.
And anything that we do, does it make it, does it put us at the head of the line, is kind of where I'm going with that?
Um, so to answer the question, um, we have received over the past three years, in the ballpark of about 75 PIFs or requests for sites from GPEC. Having a 40-acre site with the majority of utilities at curbside would allow us to be responsive in a manner that we have not been able to be. Will it put us at the front of the line? Um, that's all project-dependent, but it will definitely move us up in terms of visibility and opportunity to respond.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. So Rudy, the, um, industrial area itself isn't going to be, like, open space industrial. It'll be building enclosed industrial type?
Councilwoman Evans, Mr. Mayor, um, let me jump ahead just a little bit. This is, of course, this is the rezoning map. Unfortunately, they're hard to read, but it's, we already mentioned the part of the property that's, uh, being, um, re-designated. So in your, in your packets, you also have this thing, unfortunately, we can't read here, but it is a plan development exclusions list.
Right.
Now, you may recall, we have done numerous, uh, plan development rezonings where we try to maximize the potential for job generating, sales tax generating, clean industry types of businesses. And this, this list is another attempt to do that. Uh, we have many, many properties in the city that are zoned B1 with no plan development. We have a few properties still remaining in the city that are zoned industrial with no plan development. And we tend to get storage yards, we tend to get a lot of requests for RV storage lots. Uh, so the intent of this exclusions list is to not duplicate the, the sites and the types of uses, uh, or the types of zoning that's already available in other parts of the city. Let's try, the idea here is to truly try and create a clean industrial business property on the industrial portion of the property, in other words, the 50 acres. And then on the remaining 28 acres, let's, uh, focus, the idea here is to focus on, once again, job generating, sales tax generating types of businesses. on, once again, job generating, sales tax generating types of businesses that we, uh, so heavily depend on. One of the questions came up, uh, at the P&amp;Z meeting, is one of the commissioners thought the list was long, and his question was, "Well, what are we allowing, if we're excluding all the stuff, what are we allowing?" Uh, and, and in response to that, uh, of course, we'll provide the commission with this information as well, but we have, in our zoning ordinance, about twelve pages of uses that could be allowed in different commercial zones, including, uh, the footnotes and the, and the zoning regulations. So, there are pages and pages of stuff that could be allowed. We, uh, the applicant took a first blush at this, and they came up with their own recommended list of exclusions, and then, and then we went over it, and we added more uses, but just for your information, these are all the things that are allowed in, in our various commercial zones, industrial zones, of course, B-5 is our most intense zoning district, so B-5 conceivably could allow just about everything that's allowed in, in every other zone. And that's why staff built, well, let, let's keep out the, the stuff that's gonna be more, uh, that's gonna be less compatible with the, the type of, uh, clean industry and, 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 uh, sales tax generating type of development we'd like to see a- at that corner. And of course, you know, we still have high, high hopes that state land to the south is gonna be developed. Once upon a time, we were talking about Idaho being a gateway, gateway road into Portales, well, that's all kinda gone by the wayside, but, but certainly, uh, the potential to serve a future, uh, mixed-use community to the south of baseline, uh, is there, and, and hopefully, uh, this property can, uh, respond to that type of future development. Um, and I think I only, and tonight, tonight, Mr. Mayor, is a work session only. Uh, by state law, we have to take the general plan amendment requests to our Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to two different meetings in two different locations. So, the meeting, the next meeting will be on August twenty-eighth, and that meeting will be held at the, uh, at the Fire District Boardroom, the, the Fire District, uh, main office right across the street here.
And what time is that? It was...
They're all gonna be at seven o'clock.
Seven.
Yeah, they're all gonna be at seven, and then, uh, and then, that will be a public hearing, but it will not be a voting session. So, the P&amp;Z will have a, another public hearing and have their voting session on September eleventh, here in the council chambers, and a week after that, we will bring the item to the city council for their public hearing and decision. We've also worked in, uh, uh, on another work session, should, uh, we feel we need it, uh, for September seventeenth. So, so it's all, uh, coming up here pretty quickly. Uh, at the commission meeting on the twenty-eighth, we will probably have our initial set of, uh, recommended conditions, and it's not gonna be anything out of the ordinary, you know, we have design guidelines, we have, uh, street dedications, we have, uh, onsite and offsite improvement requirements, and, uh, you know, comply with zoning, comply with setbacks. If you got a chance to read through, uh, U-Haul's narrative, there are a few things that they're asking for, for deviations on. I think building height and, and signage are, are the main two things that I noticed. Uh, and we're still working, uh, through, through the issues with other folks, uh, internally here at the city, as far as, uh, the, the types of, uh, additional improvements we, we should request. Um, one of the things that's come up is, is a possible connection, uh, from Idaho to, um, to Baseline Industrial Park. Uh, we're looking at that possibility, we're also looking at, uh, what types of offsites and other improvements that we should, uh, ask for. And, uh, once again, Mr. Mayor, tonight's a discussion only, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any more questions? No, not now, don't see any. So...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I have, can I have a couple moments?
Sure.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to be very brief, but, uh, share a little bit of economic development's, uh, perspective on this project, or this, this application that's come in. We've been working with AMERCO over the past eighteen to twenty-four months in various capacities to, uh, bring an opportunity forward, uh, for the city to expand their employment corridors. Uh, from an economic development perspective, this represents one of the dimensions that we are seeking to build our economy. We've been working on a three-D, E-D, uh, economic development plan, being diversification, downtown, and destination. Diversification and destination, we've put in a lot of effort within the city, um, excuse me, destination and downtown, but diversification's been difficult because of the lack of, of industrial land and area for an employment corridor. This represents an opportunity where the city, through this process, removes a time barrier of anywhere between nine and eighteen months to a potential onsite user. In other words, if a company were to come today and this process was not going on, the next opportunity that they would have to amend the general plan and go through a zoning process would not be till September of next year, which essentially eliminates us from any running of those types of projects. The intent of zoning and use on this, from an economic development perspective, is to bring in, um, users that would bring living wage jobs, that would be clean, uh, industrial. We're not looking for storage yards, we're not looking for contractor yards, we are looking for businesses that bring jobs with them. Um, so, it is a great opportunity, uh, from our standpoint, as to what changes and what jobs can be brought into the city of Apache Junction. Again, it allows us to be responsive to our, our regional partners, being G-PAC and ACA and others, um, that we can respond to those, those site requests. Essentially, the applicant, one, one piece of information I'd like to share is, the applicant has been very, uh, responsive to staff requests and, and information. The part of their project that they're, they're probably most interested is in the U-Haul. However, they have worked with us in terms of zoning, they've worked with us in terms of, uh, acreage for industrial, they have gone to many meetings with us, uh, with G-PAC to understand industrial trends, and they, through this process, have seen the value as well of the trends in our current economy and the opportunities that, that it brings forth. And that's all I would, uh, would like to share with you.
And if you're paying attention, I think Mesa is being very aggressive in their south, eastern corner to do the same thing as this. They want to bring industrial and jobs there, so this will let us compete with them.
Yes, I believe there can be a natural extension of the Elliott Corridor and, and those, that that's driving down this direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alon, I'll just add, it's so important that we set aside land for this type of zoning to allow for, for folks to live, work, and play. Alon, thank you, and we will, um, as we move forward, look for opportunities to work with G-PAC and, uh, Arizona Commerce Authority on opportunities, uh, like this. So, just having that zoning in place can help those opportunities grow.
It's very close to the airport.
Yep.
So, we're now gonna move on to presentation and discussion of case GPA two-dash-eighteen, McMillan Manufactured Home Development, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Case GPA two-eighteen is a general plan amendment proposal by McMillan Manufactured Home Development Company, Lennar Homes, and, uh, our old friend, Mr. Pugh, representing, uh, the applicants. Uh, in June of two thousand, the thirty, plus or minus thirty-eight acre property at the southwest corner of Goldfield and Southern was rezoned from, uh, our old TH zone, trailer home site, to C-two local commercial district. Uh, the city had, had just adopted its nineteen ninety-nine general plan. Uh, the property under that plan was designated as a retail employment area, today, we would call that community commercial. Uh, even back then, the city was trying to diversify the housing stock and limit the development of more mobile home parks and RV parks. Uh, the property was viewed as an important gateway to the city, uh, and, uh, we worked with Mr. McMillan to, uh, do a city-initiated rezoning, and, and that's how the C-two zoning ended up on the property. However, uh, there, the, the extension of the utilities and the proper infrastructure has been very slow to reach the east part of the city. Uh, there are many parts of the east part of the city that's, are yet to be served by, uh, sewers, for example, and also, um, there was, uh, there's a water loop issue in that area that, that the water just wasn't there, the sewer wasn't there, uh, and that made it challenging for developers over the years, and although there have been a few inquiries about commercial development on the property, nothing ever transpired. Uh, so, here we are, eighteen years later, uh, might it be, uh, perhaps time to look at a, a different use for the property? Uh, along comes Lennar Homes. Uh, the proposal is to re-designate the property from community commercial to medium-density residential. Lennar Homes proposes to follow up, uh, the general plan amendment with a rezoning and plating process. They would like to create a one-hundred-and-seventy-eight lot conventional single-family home subdivision for families. Uh, the lots, uh, the zoning will probably be in the RS-five plan development range, and I believe, uh, their, their typical lot is just under five thousand square feet in size, but that's gonna come later, more detail, uh, with the, uh, the rezoning process. Once again, these maps aren't, uh, transferring very well, but basically, this is the site, Mr. Mayor, the thirty-eight acre property, once again, this is Goldfield, this is the southern alignment, this is Old West Highway. On the east side of Goldfield, we've got ADOT property, we've got Rideaway, we've got a dirt piling area that I think ADOT uses. A little farther to the east, there's a few single-family homes, and then north of Southern, we have state and BLM lands that probably are not gonna develop for a while. Immediately to the north of the site, we have Mountain View Lutheran, uh, we have some other residential properties, I think the Baptist Church is also right up here in this area. There is, uh, one property that's zoned commercial right in here, but that one's zoned by ADOT. Uh, to the west, we have a county island, uh, between Starr and Cortez, we have uncor- unincorporated, uh, large lot, single-family homes, and directly south of the site, in these parcels in here, there was, there was also a plan development rezoning in here back in the early two thousands for some folks who wanted to do, uh, like, a gas station, car wash, convenience store, and then they had a conceptual development plan for, uh, some retail space, uh, over, I think, the, about seven acres of this property is, is zoned, uh, C-B-1 P-D, general commercial plan development, and there are still, uh, three or four residential lots in there as well. Well, of course, excellent access from U-S sixty, uh, you know, at, less than an eighth of the miles south of the site. Um, and, uh, this is the conceptual development plan, once again, very conceptual, the, but when they come back for a rezoning, we expect to see something very similar to this. Uh, main access off of, uh, Goldfield Road, and the main entry point may move up or down a little bit, depending on what lines up across the street, uh, and we're still, uh, discussing other possibilities about maybe, uh, additional access routes to get, to draw people to the downtown, as opposed to, you go out your neighborhood, you go down the freeway, and you go somewhere else. Can we create some other opportunities, uh, to, uh, attract folks to our downtown area? Uh, straight, straightforward request, commercial to medium-density residential, future rezoning, future plat. Uh, this is also a discussion item, it will run on the exact same timeline as, uh, the U-Haul request, and when all of a sudden done, we hope to come back here on September eighteenth for your decision, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Question, uh, Bryant, when and if this gets built, does this give us any way to talk to the state about getting rid of the dirt storage, which I've hated since the day I've been on council? We have had them knock it down a little, but still, that's one of the beautiful gateways to our city, and I would like to see, you know, we have an end to the landfill, I'd like to see an end to...
The dirt pile.
The dirt pile.
Certainly, we can give them a conversation, I'm not sure what their interest is or what their intent is, I know that they've used them and held it as a place for...
So, the reason I'm bringing this up is to, let's start including that in the conversation for an end time to that, and they, I mean, surely, they have other, other places they can do that, so... Any more questions for the group?
So, just to clarify this, has this property transferred hands to Lennar yet, or it's still owned by the people? It hasn't closed an escrow.
I don't believe it has, Mr. McMillan is the main applicant.
So, it's just, they wanna make sure we will rezone it...
Correct.
...to what Lennar is asking for.
Yes.
Um, and, reading the directive and everything, I thought it was great, except for, I questioned that it talked about senior, as well as empty nesters, which, I'm an empty nester that I fail miserably at, 'cause they all move back home. Um...
It's your wonderful personality, huh?
Um, I'm not interested in having just a senior development, I wanna make sure they're aware of that upfront, you know, there's two-bedroom, one-bath homes that are great for single moms, as well as seniors, so to actually designate a certain area. It, it sorta hinted, like, they talked about single family, but then they talked about maybe attached as well, so, which I don't care if it's, you know, if there's, um, a variety of housing available within this subdivision. I, I think everything they said was great, I just wanna make sure they understand that we've had enough of fifty-five pluses, and that we need homes for family. I thought it was a great concept, everything that you've said about the infrastructure and that not being there is what I think the city needs to make our own investment in ourselves, to bring more projects here quicker. I think it's fabulous. Um, I just wanna make sure they're not thinking along the lines of another fifty-five plus.
And I, and I don't think they are, uh, Counselwoman Evans, I, I think, uh, that part of the discussion had to do with their marketing, they're gonna market it to everybody, everybody from empty nesters to single moms to young families, uh, and we will make sure that they understand that we are, don't want another age-restricted community.
And with the U-Haul right up the freeway, it's like, what a perfect match.
I'd love to share some data on that. We had, um, approximately at the same time, U-Haul, the opportunity to, to do, work with Dan Kaufman. Dan Kaufman's a home builder in town, he's built two subdivisions. He's got two in, in, that have just gone vertical, one off of Idaho, or, Tomahawk Road and Eighteenth, the other is over here off Superstition and Valley. Both, the same home builder, started at about the same time, very similar floor plans, basically same price, and one is for fifty-five plus, the other is for families. He's pulled forty-four permits in the family subdivision, twenty-two in the fifty-five plus. Data will continue to show, I just had a discussion with Dan about it, because he had come to get a rezoning, and the rezoning was granted to allow for senior, for fifty-five plus, and so, um, I asked him about that, and he said, "Well, maybe in the winter season, they'll pick up and start selling some more in the, in the, in the, in the neighborhood that has the fifty-five plus." Um, I, I think that, uh, the data's important, and I think that, that's good that, that you all, early on, when we're going through this process, before the rezoning is done, to share your feelings about something as important, um, as, as a balanced, our businesses work hard, and when you have a seasonality that we have, it makes it very difficult, that is, you have such great influx of business, and then you have to let people know that you employ, that, "Hey, we're not gonna be that busy in the summer, because we don't have the business." They have to always have that continual part, so, anyway, it's just my thoughts on, on how to build a balanced community over a long period of time, that I've seen here.
Absolutely.
Rudy, are these gonna be stick-built or manufactured?
Stick-built, absolutely.
Site-built.
Site.
Site-built.
Because there was an interesting news thing on Channel fifteen tonight about manufactured homes and how they're coming back in the market and the quality they are anymore, and it was, it was interesting to see that, that cycle's kinda going back around, so...
No, Lennar's a conventional home builder.
Site-built.
Yes, sir.
Site-built.
So, we're, we're looking at something that's not going to sit there for the next ten years, but will actually happen?
I believe so.
I'm, I'm just real worried about that, we've had, you know, we have lots that were approved, that zoning was approved in the early two thousands, and they are still sitting there with that same zoning and the site plan, et cetera, out there, I really do not wanna see this happen.
Hope the economy stays positive for home construction, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to follow up with what Counselwoman Evans said, it's very important, since we just are talking about, um, some economic development there, south of the sixty, to actually have job-ready businesses or places where we can put jobs in, we need the homes for the families to buy when they come in to get their jobs and, and create, uh, and build their families, and so, it's very important that they understand that we don't just do fit over fifty-five, um, developments.
Agreed.
I'm excited that that could lead to more interest in that retail project coming back down there as well.
Right.
And to get rid of the dirt pile.
[laughing]
Dirt pile, dog park, how about that for a dog park?
Be a good place for a dog park, but the, 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 the stadium, state, don't it?
Yes.
And they wouldn't dream of giving... And they wouldn't dream of giving it to-
There's actual dirt there, instead of just rock stand, so... I think we've now come to the end of this, right? I'm trying to follow along on both of these. Now, at the last meeting, we approved our next meetings in advance, so that's why we're not doing that. So, with that, we are adjourned.